Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 15th, 2023 regular meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is public comment. We have three people signed up. Public comment portion of the meeting shall not exceed 15 minutes. Citizens of the district will be allowed up to three minutes to make their statement. Citizens will speak in the order in which they sign up. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an opportunity for a citizen to express an opinion on a topic within the school committee's authority. The authority of the school committee primarily concerns the Stoughton Public Schools budget, the performance of the superintendent, and the educational goals and policies of the district's public schools. The first person we have signed up is Davina Owens. If you could please identify yourself and your address. I'm going to keep time. Whenever you're ready. Oops, if you could just push the buttons to make sure that you're recorded. Thank you. You can just do one.
Hi. Hello again. My name is Davina Owens, 374 Morton Street in Stoughton. Thank you for having us. We're here tonight to talk about the changes to the home education policy that were voted on in the July 26th meeting of the school committee. First of all, I just want to speak a little bit about why they were voted on then. And basically, the agenda that was published for the meeting did not include those, that issue. I was told it was back on the agenda five minutes prior to the meeting, which I believe is a violation of the open meeting law. And I'm frankly disturbed that this was allowed to go to vote, certainly without any input from the town. The July 26th meeting, I believe, only had three members in attendance, from what I could tell. One stated she wanted to address it again at the next meeting, since she still had some questions. There was one absent member that had questions and concerns that were not addressed prior to the vote. The proposed policy changes were not disclosed to the public until after the committee voted on them. Unless the rules are suspended, I believe any proposed policy changes must be addressed as follows. First meeting, a reading of the proposed policy language. Second meeting, accepting or rejecting any edits to that language. And in the third meeting, a vote on the change in the policy. This was not done. At no time was the public informed as to what the policy changes would be. In-person meetings were removed from the previous homeschool policy. It was something that Mr. Ford has been trying to get back into the policy, but the previous school committee and previous two superintendents have struck it down. This was backdoored by Mr. Ford, knowing and taking advantage of a new committee. Superintendent Baez and Ford essentially demanded that this policy would be changed and manipulated the school committee to vote for it. It did not come from the school committee, but from the superintendent. Shame on you for rushing them into something that they were vocal about not being ready for. Superintendent Baez erroneously stated the deadline to submit education plans was August 1st. This is an arbitrary deadline that was never before in place. In order to drive the school committee to a vote that night, even when the members of the school committee that were not present still had questions and concerns about the policy change, and many have not even received, or many homeschoolers have not even received our approvals yet, despite submitting our plans in July. So let's talk about the policy itself. Standardized testing is not an adequate measure of achievement for most homeschoolers. I would argue it's not an adequate measure of achievement for most public schoolers or private schoolers. In fact, the Teachers Association, the Mass Teachers Association, is fighting to get this issue on a ballot, simply because it's not an adequate measure of student progress. The way the policy is written, any alternative methods of evaluation must be subject to approval by Mr. Ford, and that is backwards. If you review the law with your school committee attorney, he will tell you, "I have already submitted that in writing to all of you," which you can review. Thank you for hearing me. I urge you to place the previous policy back in place. Don't rubber stamp a policy that was written by someone in the administration. Thank you.
Next on the sign up is Brittany Hastings. Again, if you could come forward, if you could state your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Brittany Hastings, and I live at 554 Plain Street. Good evening. My name is Brittany. My husband Craig and I have been teaching our children at home for the last three years in Stoughton. And tonight, I would like to express my concerns for the latest policy change to the home education administrative procedure that was passed recently by the school committee. This is a policy dangerous, that is dangerous and a slippery slope that hinders a parent's choice in how they will exercise their rights to teach their child at home. We teach our children at home because it is to give them something different than the current pedagogical system offers. This means that requiring to annually assess our children via standardized testing takes away our liberty of how we evaluate our students. Many kids, many of our kids just don't fit into the box of traditional schools require. So therefore, we painstakingly tailor an education plan just for them. The language used in this new policy highly suggests that parents must issue their student a standardized test as a form of evaluation. Most of our curriculums don't fit that mold. The case cited to back up this new portion of the policy is taken out of context. The Supreme Judicial Court case, Charles, from 1987, states that other means of evaluating the progress of the children may be substituted for the formal testing process, such as periodic progress reports or dated work samples, subject to the parent's approval. In addition, I am deeply concerned that the homeschool community in Stoughton was not notified about these changes before being voted on and approved. As a Stoughton resident and taxpayer, I am shocked by the manner in which these policies that directly affect homeschoolers were passed. On top of that manner in which it was approved, it just seemed rushed at best. I was under the understanding that an item was not allowed to be voted on if it was not on the agenda. The new policy was tabled in June and removed from the agenda in July, but still voted on and passed. Please hear what we are saying and consider that this new policy is stringent and harmful to those who choose to educate their children at home for various different reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah McKay. If you could come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Sarah McKay. I live at 150 Larson Road. I'm not going to directly go over the policy changes, but I will give you a little bit of a background and history. I've been homeschooling my children for about six years. I'm a mom of seven. I have one daughter who is presently at the high school, who is a straight A honor roll student, who was homeschooled for the three years of middle school. My hand was forced to homeschool my children because of an issue that occurred in the middle school six years ago. My first meeting with Mr. Ford, I walked out of that office in tears. I didn't want to homeschool my daughter. She is special needs. She had a situation go on. We had medical documentation that she couldn't be in school because of a safety issue that occurred in her classroom. I spoke freely to him, told him what occurred, and I was basically told that all homeschoolers basically fail. And now I'm petrified that I wasn't going to be able to do this for my daughter. My daughter is 17 now and flourishing at home. She could never step a foot back into the schools here. But I've been born, raised here, have nothing against the public school system, but I want to be able to freely educate my kids at home who have medical complexities or for religious reasons. And what just occurred in this policy just drastically shook my world. Again, every summer, it's, "Here we go again. What's going to change with the policy? Am I going to have to meet? Am I going to be intimidated at the meeting? Am I going to be told I'm going to have a truancy officer come to my house because my kids aren't in the school when I'm educating them the way that I see best?" I feel like this was snuck upon us, but each year, I feel like a little bit more keeps happening, and I feel like it keeps going against the law. I don't think there's a single one of us here that wants to disrupt the way everyone teaches in the public schools. We just want to be able to educate our kids the way we see fit. And I hope that this can change for all of us for the future and other homeschoolers coming into this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for coming out. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent update, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baez.
Thank you, madam chairman. Members of the committee and the public, just a couple of general updates we either have. One, as you know, the O'Donnell Middle School Athletic Program will be kicking off from my prior communication with you. I did meet with the athletic director, input from the high school principal, and came up with some scenarios of what will be in the athletic, in the middle school handbook, if you will. Per policy, this doesn't violate any of your current policies, but the idea is to establish seventh and eighth grade in general perspectives for how they get on the team, from trying out to having the good grades and so on. So before you is the information of student eligibility requirements and specifics around academics, in terms of their grades, in terms of attendance, and conduct and behavior, very much aligned at a lesser level than MIAA and high school sports, because this is middle school sports. We want students to be, to be getting a positive perspective of that as well. We will use everything to do with the I-I impact pre-concussion protocols, the medical protocols. Those will all be in place. We're not changing those or making it lesser because it's such an important safety issue for our student athletes in those grades currently. We're looking at track in the, in the fall and boys' and girls' soccer. Then into the winter, we currently have the potential for basketball, boys and girls. And then in the spring, we have track and potentially coed volleyball. We're also looking at unified sports. As you know, that's become a very important part of school system, so we want to do that as early as the middle school grades. My experience has been both at the middle and school grades with that. And lastly, most importantly, we went with the seventh and eighth grade because traditionally that's where the, we don't want to see sixth grade students feeling the concept of being cut from a team. And traditionally, in a six, seven, eight school, that's where it would happen, just because of the size of the children, the skill sets. So we're going to beef up our intermurals as well for sixth, seventh, and eighth grades because we may have students who don't want to compete on a team or can't compete on a team. I've received some of that in terms of they're already playing in a number of other sports, predominantly club teams, where being committed to the middle school would be something that they may not want to do because it'd be too much time in being able to play sports and timing.
So is this in addition to the current handbook? Are we going to need to vote on this?
According to your policy that you state that if it's not changing anything within the handbook, this is an addition that is very common to your high school handbook. So we read it as the eligibility requirement is grounded in what you've done in your other handbook, so a vote wouldn't necessarily be required.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the, on this particular, the middle school sports, the eligibility? Armando?
Just clarification for me. The, on the first page and second bullet, I just want to understand what that really means. Restorative work prior to participating?
I'm sorry, which one again?
First page, second bullet, in the bottom.
Off in the bottoms?
Yep. Conduct, behavior.
Yeah, so that would be, complete any restorative work prior to participating in practice. So that would be making up work, for example. So medically excuse is very different than a student who's missed work, but we would want, just like we do at MIAA level, we want to make sure that students are earning their grades and not getting behind because they can't see their teacher after school. That can't be a priority, that has to be the priority over going to practice, for example.
And that's left up to the student, not the teacher?
That's left up, so that would be, so one of the things we're working on is a handbook for our coaches that we want to have in terms of how do we make sure that students are making up work prior to and during the school year, so it doesn't interfere with them losing their grades. So this could also be a situation. This would definitely come from the teachers to the students in terms of priority, but this could also come from the coach. It could also come from a parent. It could also come from the student themselves. For example, a student might say, "I'm not going to be at practice today because I'm going to go see such and such a teacher because I need to make up a quiz." That's an, that's excused from practice. They're going to do their work first, then they can show up to practice afterwards, as an example, or even a game.
I've been just wondering if it's possible to reword it so it includes everybody else and not just the students?
Sure, add, add family.
Yeah.
Teacher, admin, and student. Welcome.
And on the second page, the last bullet, I just don't understand what family ID is.
Yeah, so family ID is a software program that we have at the high school where everybody registers through that ID process. Now we know who's in there, all the paperwork's up to date, all the information in terms of medical that we will need in terms of an emergency contact information if something happens. We're going to use that same format for our 78 program as we do for next 12.
Okay. So it's computer work rather than paperwork?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, it's very, it's very popular because everything gets sent through the student athlete and always starts with the family, so the parents.
If, is this document going to be something that the, that's parents will get?
Yes. So we, we, they get a link to the system and then sign up to that system.
I think perhaps clarify that area.
Sure.
They will receive link or whatever family ID is on the computer, so it's parent to a parent?
And sometimes we do have to, well, my experience has been sometimes we also have to do it by paper because of language barrier or any of those issues. So I'll make sure we have, receive them in a candle paper.
The computer program of the link is not bilingual?
Correct. That's one of the issues that happens with a lot of different softwares. So that's another area of trying to make sure that we're providing another resource.
We have a technologist come in. Is the software we can control or is it, is it software from a company?
Family ID is basically, there is no competitor to family ID currently that I know of in all the years that I've, but I can look to see if there is in terms of the availability to translate and so on and so forth. But right now, I'm pretty sure that that's not what's taking place.
Okay. Any other questions for Lindsay?
This is the eligibility requirements. Did you mention when it's supposed to kick off?
It'll kick off in this spring, excuse me, this fall.
This fall, in September?
Yes. Our new AD has made a commitment to try to get our kids into, onto the field as, which as you know, didn't happen after the last vote of the school committee. So we've made it a priority for him to make sure that we have as many as we can. It's going to be a slow start because of the leagues, other, other communities in the hock-a-mock league don't do this, so we have to step outside of that. So it's, it's going to be a process for us to get going. It's very much like when you start a new club team that eventually becomes a varsity team. You got to look for who, how many kids have signed up. You got to take a look at, do you need to unfortunately make cuts or you have an A and a B team, and then who are you playing? So I came from a district where we had 19 middle school sports. We were aligned to a league. Our biggest issue was time. It was the release time of the other districts versus ours.
I guess I have one more question. Do we have space for a middle school track team, for example? The, the high school track is usually full.
Yes, so we would, we will be utilizing a schedule that revolves around that and plus with the, like, for example, cross-country versus track, that becomes a little easier for us. But yes, the athletic director's going to be putting together scheduled times for all of that. Our biggest issue's actually going to be probably in the winter because our utilization of our schools with basketball. But that usually doesn't start until 5:30 or 6:00. These practices and games are done significantly before that, especially with a release time of 2:15. You're talking about, on average, an hour, an hour and a half. So we're talking about 4:30, quarter of 5:00, the latest.
Well, in the winter for track, for example, the high school track team run indoor inside the school hallways?
Right, so that would indoor tracks and in the hallways. We currently are not lined up to have indoor tracks at the, at the middle school for winter, but that could be one that does come about. I do remember the halls of OMS being used for that many, many years ago when I was a kid.
Okay.
So yes, those are, we'll put together a plan of what's going to be happening because we already met with facilities because of the utilization of the schools by other sources as well that's already been established, but we don't, we don't see it as a major issue.
Really? Okay.
We'll schedule it.
When is this program going to kick off? I'm sorry.
We're going to start this fall sport, so in September.
Oh, this September?
Yes, that's the goal.
And we don't have a schedule yet?
We have tentative schedules, yes. Our AD is currently working on that. I just evaluated them last week.
Okay.
Chris, do you have any questions? Have parents been notified that this is coming?
It is coming, yes.
Okay, so they are aware, this is my middle school?
Well, it happened, actually happened at the high school sports program where there's a discussion where other parents crossing over and heard about it. But we plan to put together a memo that goes out to all the middle school parents with the program. We don't want to tell them it's definitely happening, then something doesn't happen because I think that's a bad way of doing it. So our goal is to put it out as soon as we have cross-tease. I have a meeting with the AD next week to try to finalize communications, but that's the goal.
And just so that everybody's clear, that this has been in the works for the past year, for sure, the school committee, I know, Lindsay, and I remember this, that we, this is one of the things we championed when we saw the increase in chapter 78 funding. One of the priorities was not only covering transportation and activity fees, and activity fees will be covered for this grant.
Yes.
Yes, so that the budget will cover. We have budgeted for this, and this will be in the budget as long as we possibly can fight for this. And that, you know, is one of the things that we want to provide to the town is for every child to have an opportunity to, to participate in a sport.
And, oh, I'm sorry, one more. And please tell me if I'm out of line in this one. Since we're building a new school, perhaps because of this athletic activity in the middle school, we should maybe look at that as, as a potential area for training and meets?
Yeah, so it's a great, it's a great comment. So I, the chairman of that committee has numerous times mentioned it being a community school, and as you know, from the greening around that building and everything that's happening in the field space, it's, the idea is that it's a community building more so than a typical elementary, which just is more of a district building, if you will, only the people in that are usually use it. So the gym component there is, it's not a high school gym component, but it's a larger one than, for example, we have at the elementary schools. And the, the idea behind that is to be able to play two basketball games at the same time, which some of our elementary schools, we really can't do. And then we have not, if you were to add, for example, an indoor track, just as an example, to, to the elementary school, you could do that, but you're going to have one major problem, and that is it's more than likely not reimbursable because it's typically not something that's seen now. Some schools, what they do is they put a, a basketball court and just on the outside of that, there'll be an inside track, if you will. I've seen that, but we can definitely bring that back to the building committee in terms of.
Because I even see the basketball conflict with volleyball because they play volleyball in the gym also and the competitive volleyball.
Right, so volleyball is typically a fall sport for female at the high school level and male in the spring. And there are some coeds that take place in both, but it's typically not a winter sport.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Do you have any other, I think you have other, other updates for us?
Yeah, just really quickly, the audit that came back on June 30, 2022 was clean. Just want to make sure, I think you received, page under no findings. The no findings across major federal awards programs, none summary of school prior audit findings, none findings, financial statements audit, none. And then all above it, you see that it has no instances of noncompliance or no significant deficiencies. So those are all good things, and this is all entailing of the community. So if there was something wrong with one of our line items that they had in fact audited, the way that these audits take place, as you can see, the number seven, the programs tested as major grants were, so you had the child nutrition cluster, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and educational stabilization funds. Those are the three major funds that they looked at. Every year, they change their way that they, what accounts they look at. Sometimes they'll do back to back of the same one, but the idea is three get looked at, and it's arbitrarily chosen by the auditor. We don't know about it until they come in and say which ones they want to see.
Just for my own, to learn, where does the auditor come from? How is it assigned? Is it random?
No, it's, it's, it comes through the town as a joint, and we pay for it. I believe we pay for it separately, but I'll get you that definitive information. And of course, I gave you the page that doesn't have the name of the auditor, but I'll get you that as well, so that we have a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I tried to save paper and in the end, I didn't do that.
Any questions on the audit? Comments? Any other questions or comments for the superintendent?
Just real quickly, we have 41 people come up today for the hiring fair. So congratulations to the team that put that all out there, bilingual and all over the papers and in social media. We had 11 para applicants, six custodians, 10 substitutes, six hall monitors, and eight services. And that, as you know, is an area that we are really hurting. So to have 41, we had one person, two people actually on the spot, hired, pending, Corey and, and, what's it called? Finger printing, thank you. Just drew a blank. And fingerprinting. So that's good. Hopefully, many of these folks, because we have a ton of open positions. For example, we have seven folks that actually applied for one specific position that we have open right now. That's great because we typically can't even find the one, never mind the seven.
That's great. I know I spoke a little bit briefly to Mr. Colantoni, and he was very excited about the turnout, and I think that was a great idea to, to bring that to the community and try to fill those spaces with community, with community people. I know several parents, I actually talked to another parent, said I couldn't make it today, but this got me thinking, I really want one of those positions. So this is great, great news, and thank you also to Mr. Pickett for the social media campaign, the social media blitz. He's done a great job with promoting that. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? All right, moving on to new business. The first item is the new, new elementary school building project update. Last time we voted on the enrollment, we chose the 515 enrollment, and we also specifically said that we are consolidating the Wilkins and the South enrollment in the future building. I know that Armando was able to provide us with a note of support. I don't know if, Chris, you want to say anything? I know you weren't here for the vote, but I'll give you a chance to say if there's anything you wanted to say about the enrollment.
Like, what?
We, you weren't able to be here for the enrollment vote, but I don't know if you wanted to have anything on the record about support for the 515.
I support the school committee's vote.
Okay, thank you. The major deadline for that is coming up is the PSR submission on August 23rd, and that's when they're submitting to the MSBA. Our enrollment vote are in chosen, our preferred option, so that's exciting. Moving on to the next step, there's a lot that comes, that's, you know, a lot of work to get to this point, a lot of work still to come, but they're on track for that. Dr. Baez, did you have anything else to add from our?
No, just, just for the publics and the school committee members that weren't present, we're also going to be taking a look at a task force to take a look at what to do with our buildings. If in fact, we are positive in a vote to build a new building, what happens to the building, like the South School, for example? Much discussion is being had around the utilization of the Wilkins as a preschool. I want to continue to emphasize that because we've outgrown this building and will be outgrowing this building, especially if there's any discussions of universal pre-K, which the state is having a lot of discussions about. It is not about moving the central office. I think you've heard some of that. It's going to be about kids first and won't worry about us as adults and what's going to happen. And then what does that mean for the town in terms of the utilization of these properties if you were to in fact close it and you're not going to use it for anything? And you got to have a plan for that, or it can be very costly, or you can have a building that just stands there by itself for years after years after years, which actually just causes more issues for the community, not less.
And how is that being organized to have this discussion?
Yeah, so we're going to come to you and, and ask the committee to choose from the public. The town side will do the same to the select board as the way that Mr. Coulter and I are thinking, and we appoint some folks and let them do some work and bring it back. The committee is the starting point of any decision because the buildings are under your control. And then from there, if you were to say, well, we want to close it and we want to, just as hypothetical, we, you know, don't want the building, we're going to give it to the town for the purposes of what's the best for that? Is it a renovation? Is it tear it down? Is it selling the land? Is it using it for open space, conservation, more fields? Lot that you could talk about.
Yes, we have a number of committees that we need to organize in September, and that will be one of the list. So I keep thinking about what you, what you'd like to, to focus on because we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us this coming year. Anything else about the elementary school building project from the committee? Questions about where we are in the process? Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the Unit B contract.[1775.82]
So I am very excited to bring the Unit B contract with the Stoughton Teachers Association to the school committee this evening. I know we talked about it. It was on the agenda during executive session. So in previous meetings, not, sorry, I'm like not forming sentences. Yeah, so we are voting to ratify the Stoughton, the new contract with Unit B. I think the negotiating team did a lot of really hard work around making sure that we, as the, as the negotiating team, had really clear context on where asks were coming from, made it really clear what they were prioritizing and just like explained everything. I know as someone who like this was my first time ever doing this, I'm just really appreciated all of that and the collaborative conversations and all the dialogue. So I think what we have is a contract that really demonstrates how we value the folks in Unit B and what they do for students. And hopefully we'll show them that we feel like, that we value them through some of the things that we came to. One of the things that we really talked about, sort of to Dr. Baeda's comments about hiring, is like the ability to attract and retain really talented people. And I am excited that we're going to be able to do that with this. So yeah, I guess, like any questions or?
I do want to thank the negotiating team, both sides. Mr. Docster and the Unit B team and the whole Unit B, but certainly our side as well. It was a lot of hard work, a lot of late nights. I really appreciate you taking the time to, to work through this. Any questions about the contract? I know we've talked about it and looked at it. So when we vote for this, we're voting, we're voting for the new contract starting July 1st to 2023, correct? We need a motion for that.
I'd like to move that we approve the memorandum of agreement to a new three-year contract with the Stoughton Teachers Association Unit B for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026.
Second.
So the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion has carried five zero. So we are yay happily moving forward with that. And again, thanks to everyone for their work on that. The next item on the agenda is a memorandum of agreement with the paraprofessionals. And this, I'm turning it over to Dr. Baeda.
Thank you. To the members, as you know, we have had some significant issues in the area of finding bilingual paraprofessionals to support our L two students that are at level ones and level two, who significantly support in order to be successful. So we've had issues where trying to find these paraprofessionals who are fluent in, in our case predominantly of the Brazilian language, the Haitian language and many others, but specifically those two that stick out. This agreement would move them into that power three article for this year only. And the reason for this is quite simple. If we don't try to find out folks at a higher salary, we are going to be forced to do one of two things. A, hire third party at seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. That is a budget buster. Or B, self-report to the Office of Civil Rights that were violating potentially students' rights and the opportunity to translate and so on and so forth, which is never a good situation, even with Desi, if we had to go to them first and then self-report. So like the last issue that we had with this group, this is a one-year only because we are entering into the negotiations with this power group as soon as we can, well, targeting October. Probably not going to be until November because they have to go through their own process once the school year starts to organize, ask their people for what they want, put their proposals together, hold a meeting and then, you know, send a letter to us that says we want to start the negotiations. But we know that this will only help us for the sake of that. And we are, we've already had a lot of discussions, as I think some of you know, around the, the issue that this contract needs some work around finances and language because we are not even close to competitive when it comes to paraprofessionals who are in fact providing some of the most significant services to our kids, both in special education and bilingual, inclusion practices, but most importantly in our specialized programs. These are our folks that are, are dealing with being physical and supporting kids. But most importantly, right now, they, they do not have a living wage as employees of this district. And I think we need to find a way to resolve that issue. This helps to move this, this year only. In this one group, it's five, five people, two at the high school, two middle and one at the Wilkins, if I remember correctly. And hopefully we can find them. Like I said earlier, we found one today. So that's a move in the right direction. So I hope that you consider supporting it for the year. And then, like I said, it brings us back to the contract negotiations anyways.
Thank you. I guess my concern is that, you know, some memorandum agreement is between the school committee and the union. And yet the union didn't go through the processes outlined in the contract where they appealed, they asked the chair specifically for that and that we weren't party to this. So that's a little bit of my concern signing this without having that. We had that issue with the healthcare too, where we weren't invited to the table. And yet we were expected to sign a memorandum of agreement. So I am a little bit concerned about that. I just following procedures and the contractual obligations. So that is kind of my concern on that end of that. I do understand the need for these professionals, for these paraprofessionals for that. Committee questions, comments?
Yeah, perhaps a little bit more information would be helpful.
Right, if we have any information from their union president.
So would you like a letter from them that states that they would want to see this, they would want to open the contract? This is a, so this comes down to a process of fifteen years of doing this. And this is my first time where this type of a process of union going to the chair of the school committee for an M O U takes place. Typically it's negotiations, M O U's are taken care of by the superintendent and then just comes to the, the school committee for a rationale to happen. So I own that, that's on me. So I'm happy to reach out to, to them and, and have them send a letter to the committee, basically stating that, you know, they, they, I'm asking them to follow the protocol that I, I didn't ask them to do. At the end of the day, that's what it comes down to.
Questions or comments about that? I think I would appreciate that.
I would too.
You know, just so that we are consistent.
Even if, if I may, if they come in person, so we can just listen more and perhaps we can ask questions within, you know, general utterances?
Yeah, I mean, you can do that. I think that the issue here, from my perspective again, was I'm the one for the process. It's an M O U, which in this particular case basically moves somebody to seventeen dollars an hour instead of fifteen dollars an hour, if I remember correctly. And if we're going to hire folks, then I need to know where we're putting them at, at P one, we're not getting candidates. So that was the reason, the rationale. But I'm happy to do whatever the committee would like.
All from the committee?
Just like to say that I, I applaud moving wages in the direction of a living wage, but, but would love to be included in that conversation.
Would you like to vote on this tonight or do you want to table it? What would, what would be our motion?
Pending, not getting it to public comment, recognizing comments that were made earlier. I'm going to suggest that the committee is probably going to be meeting sooner than later and we can bring this issue back.
Okay, let's do that, yes. I just want to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the school nurse appointment. Yes, and I'm going to turn it over to our head nurses, Danielle Gallin for, for that. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
I bet your nurse to come in now, sorry.
No, I feel like I just about live in this room over the past couple of years. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman Weiss and the school committee for having us. And Mrs. Weiss was also a part of our hiring committee, which is, she got a firsthand glance at, at what happens with the team and, and the process that we go through in adding to our team. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I am hopeful that we will, upon your vote, be adding a new member to our team. Jennifer Fallon, who has over twenty years' experience as a nurse. She's also a Stoughton resident and a mom to two amazing young ladies. And I've had the pleasure of knowing her for about a decade, I believe. We are fellow soccer moms and our kids kind of grew up on the soccer field. I'm greatly appreciative of the opportunity of being here and adding another amazing, competent, compassionate nurse to my team.
Can you talk a little bit about the position that she's filling?
Oh, sure. So our district nurse resigned earlier this year. And my middle school and high school float had stepped, has stepped into her role. So the role of floating in between the middle school and high school of supporting both the secondary buildings and approximately two thousand kiddos between the two, no pressure, is the role that, that Jennifer has applied to.
I just want to say, I really appreciate being included on this committee. It was my first time to be on the hiring committee and that we really have a great team of nurses. That's definitely something that I took out of this. And it was really exciting to get to meet Ms. Randall. She's, she's a real go-getter that, you know, she has a broad nursing experience. She, she's going to be diving headfirst into this position. Just really struck, you know, struck us how determined and how motivated she was at the interview. So I'm very excited to add her to the team. Does anybody have any questions or comments for? Everyone's quiet tonight.
Yeah, no questions.
All right, I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Jennifer Fallon as the Stoughton High School O'Donnell Middle School Float Nurse.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Congratulations on the board. So excited to have you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the minutes from July 26th, 2023, school committee meeting. At this time, I would like to ask for any amendments or corrections to these minutes. I did have one, Nicole. In the present, you have Armando and Chris, and then you have them also absent. So you guys, we haven't reached that ability. We felt your presence.
Successfully cloned myself.
We have, we computed out where your presence, but unfortunately you weren't, weren't there. So that's what I had for a correction. Any other comments or questions? I know there's a lot of, thank you, there was a lot of technical voting in all of that meeting, so.
Looks good to me.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 26th? All right, a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, so the motion has passed three, zero, two. That brings us to the final minutes of the meeting. At this point, we do have a, a meeting scheduled for September 12th at seven P M. But given some of the issues that we clearly need to go back and look a second chance at, we may have a meeting later this month. Sorry, I'm calling you all in your summer vacation. But we do technically, we do still have that meeting scheduled for the 12th. But I think we need to talk about having another meeting to look back at some things that have come to our attention. The next building committee meeting, we're voting on the, the August 23rd on the P S R. And then there's one in September, there are the second Wednesdays of the month on this, at seven P M. Any other questions or business?
I'll share through to the membership. So if you want to stick to Tuesdays, which I believe is a commitment that you've tried to make when you can, the 22nd of the 29th, probably the 29th would be best because we would want to have the policy subcommittee get together and also get some further information to you about that other agenda item prior to you taking your vote on either issue or both issues. We can try to turn it around for the 22nd, which would be a week from now, if that, or if not, don't, don't publish the 22nd and make it the 29th.
So we have a preference for dates at this point?
Fine with the 29th.
I think 29th works best.
29?
I could do either.
Okay. Armando, 29th? All right, so let's target August 29th for a meeting to discuss some issues. We'll definitely, if you have agenda items and issues that you would like to take up, definitely let me know. At this point, if I could have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
All right, second, the motion has been moved and seconded. Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 All right, this motion has carried five, nothing. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming and good night.